...meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education to order. Thank you all for coming. Monday, October 6, 2014. Susan, would you take attendance, please?
Valerie Anderson here. Toni Bettini.
Here.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Gregory Cava here. Michelle Cora here.
Yes.
Emma Lee Hibbert here.
No.
James Hirschfield.
Yes.
Kelly La. Jennifer Cody here. Michael Sinatra.
Here.
I am here. Peter Tagley.
Here.
All right, we're all here except Greg, who was here, but I guess he had some kind of flying auxiliary at Rock State that night. Dr. Casatino is not present tonight. She's out of town, taking her place in her stead tonight as the recent chair. So thank you. All right, item two on our agenda, opportunity for public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who'd like to address this? All right, seeing no one, then I'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? We'll discuss it. Seeing no one, then the items on the consent agenda are approved. The board of the chair, I just wanted to thank.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Field trips, there was some conversation about what happened to the Italian or something.
You mean the retreat, everyone?
I mean, are we?
Those Spanish and French trips.
That's later a separate item, but did something go missing?
These are items that we had discussed previously.
Okay.
Okay.
So the Mystic already happened. No one has. Yes and has.
No, October 9.
No, it will soon.
No, this is a planned trip.
They asked for tomorrow.
If you want to discuss it, we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then the items on the consent agenda are approved. The board of the chair, I just wanted to thank Dr. Casatino for hosting a board retreat with Mr. Brito's assistance, facilitating the board in getting together and becoming more person with each other, speaking to each other plainly, which is good. I think it's only healthy for the organization to do that. So I appreciate your help on that. All right, turning it over then to the superintendent's report. Mr. Brito.
Good evening. First, I would like to share the correspondence that we received was from ASAP, and they were grateful for the $15,000 contribution, and they articulated that they appreciate the use of the buildings, and they appreciate offering opportunities to students to enrich student experiences in Region 12.
Can I just come up to that for a second?
Sure.
I think it should be said, I think the board recognizes that ASAP does a tremendous job, provides a tremendous resource for our region. We're very lucky to have the fortune to have. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would like to just go over the appointments. Newly hired Cassandra Moreau is the new grade five teacher, and we were able to offer transition period between Betty Leiston and Cassandra. We're very excited to have Cassandra on board. We also have Caitlin Higa, the peer professional at Booth Free School, and she is replacing Colleen Sarah. You see under the next item the resignation of Colleen Sarah, who was a professional, peer professional, excuse me, at Booth Free School. Also at Booth Free School, we have Amy Cavella, now in grade five. She is a student teacher. We did have her placed at the school already, and she has stepped in to replace Carrie Snowden currently. Any questions? Next on the agenda, we do have a presentation for you. There's a proposal for a trip to Madrid, Spain, and I see in the audience Michael Nolan and Alicia Ignara and Heidi Adele, all from the Low Language Department, and so now would be an opportunity for you to talk about this opportunity.
Welcome.
If you wouldn't mind just taking one pass through.
Sure.
Thank you.
You'll just identify yourselves.
Sure, this is my colleague Alicia Ignara and Mike Nolan. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm just going to briefly, very briefly, explain the trip and then open it up if you have any questions. We're proposing to take a group of students, a minimum of 12, maximum of 24, to Spain during our April break, leaving on Saturday, April 11, returning Monday, April 20. Included in the trip are the round-trip flights, our hotel stay, breakfast and dinner, and we have a 24-hour tour manager with us. We'd be busking from destination to destination. There's a copy of the itinerary here. We would fly into Madrid, travel from Madrid to Toledo, Cordoba, Sevilla, Granada, and then at the Costa del Sol. One of our main learning objectives would be to make connections with the literature that the students study, including in Senorita Ignara's Spanish 5 class. Also, the students would be expected to order food in Spanish and use Spanish as much as possible. We actually went in 2007, and we took over a karaoke place as well, so we sang in Spanish. Mr. Hirschfield's daughter participated in that activity as well. So that was the last time.
And we have some footage.
So it's a great opportunity to connect with the kids learning in the classroom and for them to practice in a real-life setting, in a safe setting as well. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Yes?
Everyone has to pay their own fee, which is, what, $35.60?
Yes, ma'am.
And are we giving any help to those who can't quite make almost $4,000? How expensive?
Good question. Our plan is to apply for a Connecticut Community Foundation grant and to kind of mirror the process that was used last year with the Canada trip, where we would identify, we have a protocol in place to identify families who need the help and then provide them with help accordingly. So in addition, the ACES Travel Company has a functionality where you can make your own, each student can make their own webpage, and they can post a video talking about why they want to go on the trip, and they can share it with their Facebook friends and solicit funds that way, and people can actually donate to the trip using a credit card. So in addition to any other fundraisers that we would, we've already planned some.
Okay, Peter?
Has the board ever discussed setting up a fund during its budgetary process to help underwrite student ventures and other?
Foreign travel?
Well, foreign travel.
No, not there, no. What else?
I'd be happy to request it, just saying.
That would be great from our end, because that's a frequent challenge for us.
Susan?
Two chaperones for up to 20.
The way it works is for every six paying participants, a chaperone would come. So if we were to have 18 kids, we would have three chaperones, so one to six ratio.
Does anyone would like to make a motion to approve this?
Some would. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Any, not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
I just had a question. Yeah, I was like, where did this get you? Do you know how many students you have interested so far?
We have a meeting lined up for tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
So I know that Senorita has.
Yeah, as of right now, I have between my level three and my level five students, about 19 students with what I consider genuine interest, meaning they've actually talked to their parent or parent about it, and they're not just fantasizing and saving in their piggy bank. So we've got 19 just from my half of the high school students.
Wow, that's great.
I think I have about 10 or 12 that have expressed interest.
And you need 12 to go.
Correct.
Okay, sounds like you might make it.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
We're hoping.
Just make a comment. That's when we discussed this in the past about alumni association. This is how, things like that which the board needs to pursue, an alumni association would help provide funds for things like this. We really need to take a, you know, we get to a, at some point, take a look at something like that.
Okay.
It'd help underwrite a lot of things that many students want to go, can't go, I mean, due to expense. Seems to me that the board should be able to find some method out of a $22 million budget to try and give itself a little boost.
All right, thank you, Valerie.
I think that's a great idea, Peter, and I'd like to see that maybe remember when we start building the budget again, because wouldn't it be great if we could advertise ourselves to a larger community as people who regularly have these great trips, this great enrichment, and that we do give fairly reasonable scholarship support? I mean, I think that'd be wonderful, so we can afford it.
Anyone else? All right, is there a motion on the floor, I'm sorry, to approve the trip? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry? This is the second vote. Yeah, this is the second vote. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, and I'm sure that you'll report back if there's any need to. All right, thanks.
Next on the agenda, we have Heidi Adele, who will be presenting regarding the Quebec trip, similar to the experience that they had last year.
Hi, I have, if you'd like, your own brochure here, and I'm going to pass around the binder, which I know Mr. Geeson likes to look at, all the safety protocols and all that. This is exactly, pretty much, the same trip as last year.
Sure.
And last year, as you know, if you were at the presentation that the students made, it was very successful. We feel that there was a lot of genuine interest in staying with the host families, which was a big relief for me, because the first trip we did was at a hotel, and I felt it lacked that, that let's really find out what the culture is about, so I was very pleased with that. This year, we had a little informational meeting pending board approval, and this meeting, a large number of eighth-grade parents showed up. So I think there's a lot of eighth graders at high school. I'm not so sure about this year, because a lot of them went last year, but we have at least three people who want to go again. So the price of the trip, I'm not quite sure if there's enough brochures. I hope so, almost. The price of the trip is around $800. Unfortunately, the grant that we applied for last year is only offered once this year, so it's not available until, I think, after the trip. But we do have a little bit of scholarship money set to the side, and we try to fundraise with the families, and this year, the promotor company also has the same fundraising software available for the students, and a lot more information, so I'm hoping to get more parents on board helping out with the fundraising. So.
How many students do you expect to take?
Well.
Any idea?
We made it clear that we need at least 20 by October 15. Maybe we'll extend it one time, but last year, you know, we kept extending it, and we barely got 20, you know, by December or by November, so we're going to extend it really until mid, you know, maybe the end of October, and if we don't have 20 by that point, we'll wait till next year. Because unlike the other trip, this trip, the size of the bus is important, and the more kids you have in the bus, the better the price is. So, you know, if we can wait a year, and it's the eighth graders, and they'll be here next year, that's fine. I really, I want to keep the interest alive. I'd like to go every year, and I know the now eighth graders, you know, last year were very disappointed that they couldn't go, so putting it out there, we'll see, and, you know, of course, we'll go. Love it.
All right.
Questions?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Valerie.
Your student audience is mainly eighth graders?
No, it's eighth through 12.
Yeah, okay.
I had several high school students tell me they were interested, but they haven't yet to send me the email requesting the information, so I have about five high school students that are, seem like definite candidates, and some others, maybe. But the eighth graders this year, there's really a large number of them who seem very sincerely interested in going.
And as I recall, we had a really nice presentation afterwards, and the enthusiasm of the kids was amazing.
Yeah, no, we want to do that again.
That's wonderful.
Part of the reason for that presentation was the grant, because they require us to present to the community, but I think that was just such a good idea that we'll do it again.
Some would. Okay.
Is there a motion? What is your motion, Valerie?
To give approval to the proposed Quebec trip for February 2015.
Second?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? It's not definite, right? But it's hopeful.
It's hopeful.
All right, all those in favor? I'm sorry, Michelle.
I just wanted to ask if you guys are thinking about doing a trip to France or a different?
I've thought about it. I just, it's a numbers game, to be honest, you know, if I thought like there were enough kids, and part of it, too, is it's just, since we have Canada so close, it's accessible, and I know I can find the money somehow to make it accessible to even those students who can't come, whereas France, it's a little harder. I, every once in a while, I mention it to the students, so I would definitely consider it.
I just was thinking that maybe like once every four years, a trip to France, and then Quebec is a really nice, short, little, smaller one for the gap year, the in-between year.
Right, I was thinking like every other year.
Every other year, yeah. Because I think if you go every year, you'll eventually not be.
Also, if it's a similar trip, then, you know, we, one year, we proposed Montreal, and we almost, that almost worked. Didn't quite have enough students, and there was a change in the middle school faculty at that time. We weren't six through 12, so that kind of impacted the decision not to go, but other than that, we've definitely considered it. It's just a matter of getting the ball rolling and getting the students on board and interested in.
Is there a question? Valerie?
We used to do that.
Yes.
My daughter went on one, stayed with families, just absolute lifetime good friends. It was a great experience. It was. That through CIE, the council?
Oh, you did that? Okay.
The council.
I'll have to look into that. A few years ago, we used to, Yale University used to set up a city in France, they would set up an exchange with them, and right when, you know, I was really gearing up to find our dreams partnership, they disbanded the Center for Teaching French at Yale. For, you know, at least that portion that helped high school teachers, so I'm hoping to find a school that I can find a good connection with, so that we can do that kind of program, because it's authentic and I like that, but in the meantime, I, yes, I'm waiting for the students.
You know, CCSU has great travel programs.
CCSU?
I mean, granted, it's a college, but I don't know, maybe there's a good link up there, because that would be so phenomenal, yet again, wonderful for our students to take advantage of.
I told the high school students this week that, you know, if, depending on what happened with the Quebec trip, we should consider maybe going to France next year, for those of them who are juniors, but to get them going. Yeah, so I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any others? Are there any motions on the floor? It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Standing, all right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, again, science scores. Let me see on the handout.
Every fall, we share the results of the standardized assessments. This year, we only have the Science for CMT, grades five and eight, and CAPT, grade 10 for Science, as we did not participate in the CMT and CAP format in English Language Arts, because we participated in the S-Back field test. So I did put together a packet for you. Just to go over the table of contents, there is an introduction specifically to the Science, CMT and CAPT. You'll be able to see the results for a percentage at and above goal by district and by school, and you'll be able to see the performance level for each of the five performance levels, and there'll be a comparison for DIRC-C and longitudinal results, and some good news when we compare ourselves to DIRC-B.
Well, I can't be too late, but I'll just call.
Oh, did you? Thank you very much.
All right, 15.
You're welcome. So just to reiterate, this assessment was administered in March of 2014, and the CMT Science was added in 2008, and does assess life science, physical science, earth science, and scientific inquiry in grades five and eight only. The CAPT really looks at the application of these concepts in real-world situations, specifically scientific inquiry and reasoning, and that is only in grade 10. Page four, you can see for grade five, grade eight, and grade 10, the actual science results, and directly underneath it were the state averages for each of those grade levels. Then underneath that, it's broken down by school, the percent at goal and above goal by school for grade five, and then grades eight and 10 at Chaparral.
This is the test administered, right?
Do you have any sense of whether the differences are statistically significant? If they seem so much higher than the state averages? The state averages certainly take a look at all fifth-grade students, all eighth-grade students throughout the state. We are known for having the greatest gap as far as students who do not perform well, who come from certain categories, minorities, pre-reduced lunch, compared to the other students. So Connecticut is known for having a tremendous gap, and that average does bring down overall for the state, yes. We are above the state average for all grade levels, significantly above, but it's a concern across the state for a lot of districts.
Maybe I'm being premature, you might be getting into this, but why do we do so well in grade eight and not 10? Had that anything to do with the propensity of high school kids not to take certain science classes, because they have choice, and/or because of the remnants block scheduling?
I don't have a definitive answer for that, but you'll be able to see longitudinal of those results, and then we definitely do have a plan in place. Kim has looked at these results. She's got objectives and goals to assist the Science Department at her school to raise the results for future students. And I think in the past, in all honesty, when you had the English Language Arts, you know, you had the reading, you had the writing, and you had the math, there tended to be more focus on math and reading. Right? So the science, I don't think stood out as much. Now, we don't have those results this year, and we're really focusing on how can we improve? How can we help students improve? So on page five, it's a performance level summary, because there are five different categories, from below basic to advanced. So in the circle graph, the aqua blue and the dark blue make up the percentage that are at and above goal. So you have those results for fifth grade, for eighth grade, and for 10th grade. One thing to make special note of is that in 10th grade, that is the largest percentage at advanced, when compared to the advanced percentage for the other grades. You should also note the proficient is at 90 percent, so we need to move, you know, a lot of the students that end up in the green area, we need to assist to get them to the goal area.
Michelle?
Teresa, will you just remind us, all students take this test?
Yes.
Students with special needs?
Absolutely, yes. We accommodate them, we provide whatever accommodations are indicated in their IEPs, and yes, everyone takes CMT or CAPT.
Okay.
The following three pages.
Just a question for you. In terms of, like, when we're looking at DIRC-C.
Yeah, so the next three pages.
Yeah, and we're looking at, you know, our position there, and I'm just wondering if we've ever gone to some of the districts, like Region 17, for example, for grade 10, 74.7 percent. You know, I'm not, I'm not interested in someone who's, you know, outperforming us by one or two percent, but that's a very dramatic outperformance. I'm just wondering if it would serve us well to send a team, teachers, administrators, to see what Region 17 is doing.
Good suggestion. You might.
Did it last year?
I'm sorry.
We have some. We pick the top three of the DIRC region, we send a team out to the schools and prepare notes, and that's one of the many pieces of information that goes into the formation of goals.
Okay. Was that, did you find that useful?
To be perfectly honest with you, they don't do a lot of things differently than we.
Okay.
I think we need to focus on our own kids, but it would be irresponsible not to try to collect that data and have those experiences.
Well, I appreciate that you made the effort, right?
Well, I get to answer you this way, instead of the other.
Like we've said, we're really making significant strides to impact those results at the 10th grade level. I mean, I did bring this binder that has CAPT materials. You could certainly take a look, because I set up a table of contents with sections that with the teachers, the Science Department, to go over the contents here, so that we really can have a purposeful plan to assist and make sure that if there are any gaps, that we are able to close those gaps for students. I mean, we did change the schedule. Valerie had asked that question last year, was the first year that that was implemented, so we are definitely trying to impact and making sure that the students are taking it seriously in 10th grade as well. As you heard from Kim, they've done site visits to try to gather information.
To just follow up on that point about changing the schedule, I would expect, and I'm sure you're planning, that that, the effect of that is really a few years out.
Right, that we need a consistency to happen, and it doesn't happen overnight, and we realize that, but we are definitely working very hard to reduce this particular trend.
Valerie?
Well, the good news is, is that the eighth grade is doing so very, very well, and the fifth grade, but spectacular work for the eighth grade, and I think I understand grade 10, because everyone has divergent interests at that point, but of course, that doesn't help the situation, because we're being compared with everyone else that way. And particularly our elementary schools, Vernon and Booth, have done excellent work, so, and Washington Primary, but pretty outstanding with those smart kids in Greatwater.
All right, anyone else? Go ahead.
So the next three pages, six, seven, and eight, are representative DIRC rankings. And in the last page, I know you like to look at particular cohorts of students, how they did in fifth grade, how they did in eighth, how they did in 10th, although there is no vertical alignment for the science. It's not like we're comparing apples to apples, so I just want to caution you there, but I know that you value this type of information. And finally, I always search to compare ourselves to even DIRC-A and B, which are wealthier communities, and we do have seven districts that the eighth grade did outperform in DIRC-B, so I did list those to go along the lines of what Valerie said, so definitely congratulate them for all of their hard work, and we want that to continue as they go to high school.
I just need to, if you could just at least walk me through how to read this.
It's color-coded, so the grade five in 2008 was the grade eight in 2011. So you follow the color coding, the green, the dark, dark green, and then they were 10th graders in 2013, which is right here.
Okay. So you're following that?
So wherever I could find a match, the 2011 fifth graders were the eighth graders that took this assessment in 2014, so that you could see as a cohort group how they did throughout their experience in the district.
So.
So.
Okay. All right.
Are our high school students taking SAT II subject tests in biology, chemistry, and physics? Could you start again?
Are our high school students taking SAT II subject tests in biology, chemistry, and physics? And are they lining up with this, or are they avoiding it because we're not really up there with the school?
Those are good questions. There was a change in the way that the science courses were offered, the sequence of those science courses, so we did spend a lot of time last year looking at the state, looking at CMT, I'm sorry, CAPT results in particular, to see what their. to see what their sequence of programs were. So we made adjustments to, that made sense to the science teachers and that was fully implemented this year.
But do they take biology, chemistry, and physics?
Yes, they do.
Because you can take an SAT two subject test anytime of the year, if they're very frequently offered. It's not like in P where there's only one shot, so even if you have a-
There's no requirement.
No, you can, but they're offered throughout the year unlike AP test, which is only offered in May. So even if you have a block schedule and do it all at the same time, you could take your test in December or you could take it in June or whatever you'd like. Are our kids taking these tests or?
Not as many as we would like. I think we're trying to get them to, but I don't know what the percentage is that-
Can I get a question?
She's asking the percentage of students that will take, that take the SAT.
The SAT two in science classes and science. I don't have a percentage off hand, but we do have a grade level students that take the content area test. More and more competitive schools are asking that students do that, try to do that.
Right.
I'm wondering if our SAT two subject test scores in biology, chemistry, and physics align with these scores? These tempered scores or whether they're better? Oh, absolutely not, no. They're very different tests. Comparing the CMT to the CAPD, the SAT is comparing apples, oranges, and kumquats. All different. I guess what I'm looking for is if we're doing, if we have students taking the SAT two subject tests in sciences and they're doing well on them, then I wouldn't worry about this score. If we don't have that happening, then I'd be more concerned. Or if the SAT two subject test scores in subject areas in science are similar, I'd be worried. So I'm just looking for information.
That's something for us to definitely investigate.
I'm just wondering, is the, is the state planning on doing away with the science CAPD and the science CMT?
Well, as we speak, there are lots of different committees that the state did put together to look at science assessments, to look at next generation science standards because we are still following the Connecticut framework for science, which is different than the national standards that are out there. So my hope is that this school year, we will hear definitively whether we are shifting our standards and what will happen with the assessments. For this year in the spring, 2015, we are still administering the CMT and CAPD in science. The state has definitely indicated that.
Sure.
I'm just, I was looking at the cohorts and the differences going between eighth and 10. And it appears, you know, that each year there's this drop. And then I look at the breakdown of the 10th and there's this growth, an enlarging portion of the pie of the advanced. So I'm wondering about in high school, clearly there's growth on some tracks of science, but not all our students are maybe taking, what are they, I don't know exactly what's going on. But clearly, a lot of students learned a lot in that ninth and the first half of 10th grade. And I don't know what the other students are doing, are they now being exposed? Is their curriculum vastly different than what the students who escorted the advanced? Because it's just, it's a bizarre dichotomy going on there with growth from fifth to eighth to 10th for the advanced students and a decline, you know, too many students moved from gold to proficient.
There was a disconnect in the sequence of the courses, but we have rectified that. So we are almost, I would almost bet money that you're going to see a significant improvement this year because everything is now in place. We have really looked at all the data, searched and searched. And if we hit a dead end, we just kept going and kept going. So the supports are in place, the communication is there, we're very clear on what's expected. And we're making sure that the students also understand that before March.
Forgive me if I'm asking, because I'm trying to understand all of this. But I'm seeing here on page seven, Mansfield is number one with ninety-two point two in eighth grade. But in 10th grade, they're not even on the-
So that must be, because they must be a K school. See, that happens, there are schools that drop off. So you'll see the font is smaller font for the fifth grade because there's so many more places. But then they, they kind of blend into other districts and so it's not a correlation much.
Again, I was looking too, so I see, you know, Tallinn, which is third in eighth grade with eighty-eight point two. But then in 10th grade, they go down to sixty-nine. So, I mean, we have drastic, it seems to me that there are a lot of-
Yes, if you look at the state average, the lowest is for science in 10th grade. Significant, I think it's like forty-something percent.
And Canton as well, I mean, there's a big difference in their testing too between eighth and 10th.
But March was the first iteration of this test?
No, it happens every year. And you've always received the information, however, with math and reading being probably the bigger focus areas. I'm not saying it was overlooked, I'm just saying I don't think there was as much focus given to it. Now, it's the one assessment that we have results for, so we are definitely picking it apart because we do not want to continue this trend.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead.
I think it's an interesting discussion to hear about our science program. And it feeds into our overall discussion about what kind of school are we going forward? And how do we communicate that to the wider community? Because in some of the schools that are high performing in 10th grade in the science curriculum, or the science test, they have an expectation that their students will take college prep curriculum for four years of science. And that will include three, four sciences, college history and business. That is just an expectation that a lot of the schools that have these high scores in 10th grade. If we don't have that expectation, if we give our students the opportunity to take another level or alternative science courses, we may find that we will not score well on these standardized tests of all kinds. And we have to say, well, we're sort of offering a college prep curriculum for, you know, but not as maybe as rigorous, with not maybe as rigorous an expectation as some, you know, school systems.
Your point is well taken and our students do take those core science courses. And this assessment is administered in the spring of 10th grade. So it's really before their second year of high school is completed. So we, again, have come together to make sure that where there are gaps, that we are closing those gaps.
Although some schools are even pushing some of it down to eighth grade, as you know, and so they can take more advanced placement in junior two year. So we just need to find out where we are science wise and make sure that we're, well, that we want to offer the curriculum we want to offer.
Right, and it's a concern throughout the state. It's definitely a concern throughout the state and so we shall see the direction that they take with all these committees that they have now.
I don't think the top schools will switch from the classic, basic college prep expectations though.
Biology, chemistry, and physics. Anything else?
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we do have some guests with us who will be-
Yes.
I'm so sorry, but I just want to bring under your report, I guess, the great letter that the first selectman of the two towns wrote to various newspapers. I have a copy of the one that he's in. I guess it's a spectrum and it's great.
Yes, it was cited as well, thank you. All right, go ahead.
We do have a presentation to different organizations. This is in respect to the Community Relations and Communication Services. And so we do have Danoski and Associates and Visual Impact, who will be presenting this evening, as well as Baldwin Media Marketing.
All right.
And so-
Welcome. Whoever first did you talk to, I mean, take whoever's ready, Danoski?
Danoski and Associates and Visual Impact. The other is waiting outside, okay, thank you.
Welcome, morning.
He's just waiting for the PowerPoint to be hooked up. We have a multimedia show.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and we appreciate the opportunity to present a proposal for your Community Relations and Communication Services. What we have today is the expertise of two firms that are coming together. Danoski and Associates, I'm Sharon Danoski, president and founder of Danoski and Associates and Visual Impact. Danoski and Associates is a full-service firm to nonprofit organizations. We specialize in things from building boards, strategic planning, marketing communications, branding, as well as fundraising and public relations. And I would like to turn it over to David and Bill to talk a little bit about Visual Impact.
Sure, hi, my name is David Clark and I'm the vice president at Visual Impact and creative director. And my background is I ran a full-service advertising agency in Danbury for 24 years. And with the emphasis on conceptual campaign thinking and graphic design services. And we also did media planning and scheduling and marketing, strategic market planning as well. So that's what we would be bringing in is that expertise in advertising. And this is my partner, Bill McCann. And I want to say a little bit about yourself, Bill.
Sure. David and I formed Visual Impact back in 2007. I had run a imaging company called Putnam Imaging Center in Danbury for many years, concentrating on display graphics and graphic design for all sorts of clientele from corporate to nonprofit and a lot of institutional clients as well. We've serviced many of the local public and private schools and local colleges for their graphic display needs over the last thirty-seven years.
So we have the combined capabilities now, not only for the creative services, but to do the large display format print production. We do that all in-house in Danbury.
All right. And so what we'd like to do is share with you a little bit more about the team who will be together. You just heard from David and Bill. I'm Sharon Danoski, my specialty has been in marketing and communications as well as building boards and fundraising. I'd like to introduce Dr. Larry Smatroff.
Good evening. Former dean of community and economic development at Nogatuck Valley Community College, where I spent most of the time working out in the communities, very often with school systems. Organizational effectiveness and learning for Danoski and Associates.
And Peter Roach.
I'm a former journalist. I've been working as a specialist in media relations for many years. I'm also a professor at Long Island University in media and communications.
And I would also like to mention that Peter has a daughter who is a senior at Shapag, as well as a son who's a sophomore. And I have also been involved with Shapag as I will now be his daughter's advisor for her senior project. It's my second senior project that I've been involved in and I've been involved in a number of career days. So we have familiarity in the educational system and with Shapag. And in addition, we've done work for the Harvey School, which is located in Bedford. Brass City Charter Schools, we're currently doing strategic planning for them. South Kent School, where Peter did a full communications plan and rollout. Trinity Pauling School, the Gunnery, Westcon, which was doing all the graphics. So we have a good solid, and Shapag. So we have a good, solid background in education, which was something that you had mentioned is important in the R of D. We want to share with you our approach. And what we do is we take a very strategic approach. And if anyone read or looked at last month's Harvard Business Review, the think do, the think feel do is kind of a common mantra that you've been hearing. But it's actually been around for probably a couple of years and it's part of what we do as a marketing strategy. And the thing is, what do you want people to think, know, or understand? So as it applies to your school and what your objectives are, what are the factual things that people should cognitively relate to? But we also know that people make decisions with their hearts. So how do you want people to feel or respond? What is it that they want to feel about the school? Because certainly graduates, and I was ironically at a wedding of one of your graduates about two weeks ago, who's still speaking favorably about the experience he had here. He went on to get, become a CPA, five-year school down at Wake Forest. He's working for one of the big four, doing extremely well. And he credits the education he got here. So that's a very visible intuitive kind of feeling that he has. And then finally, when you take those two things, the most important thing is what specific action do you want people to take? And in this case, I'm sure what the action you want is them to choose Shapag School. So you have to put those three together in order to have an effective strategic approach. The first thing we will begin with is the community assessment. We begin with the questions that say, who is your audience? Who is it that you're looking to attract here? What are they thinking? What is their decision-making process? How do they choose? Why do they choose? What are the hot button issues that are important to them? And then we blend that with the answers. And we find the answers by actually talking to people. We talk to current parents, we believe we should talk to former parents. We should talk to former students like John, who had such a great experience here. As well as future parents, what are they thinking about before they're deciding what school their child should go to? We will do this through the privacy of a survey, using Survey Monkey, and being able to, you know, work with a viable database that we would rely on you pulling together for us. But in addition, we would look to the discussion of focus groups because it's not just quantitative information we want. We also want to blend in the qualitative and anecdotal information so that we can really understand what the experience is that people are looking for. And then the gathering of information points that really lead to a clear direction. And that clear direction is the direction that you want to have. We would have a conversation with you so we can better understand exactly what your objectives are in this. We know that you want to bring more people, but we want more details of really how that is. And so then we frame the community assessment in order to pull that together. The next thing that we do is really look to draft what we call key messages. Ironically, Peter and I this Thursday are going to speak at a national forum down in Washington DC for Board Source. And the topic is how to develop the key messages. So key messages are absolutely critical. And what key messages are, is a term used to describe how you talk to people about who you are and why you exist as an organization or as a school. It communicates key points consistently so that everyone is on the same page very easily. We know that communication can happen formally and informally. It happens formally when you have the collateral materials, the marketing materials that you're strategically aiming it at. It also happens informally when you're in the grocery store, you know, or you're, you know, at your local bank or, you know, you're in the workplace. When parents are in the workplace, when teachers are in the workplace, what is it that they are consistently saying about your school? That's where your key messages come in. So think about what you want people to know about your school and your purpose. You develop a few core key messages. You don't have 26 key messages. We're getting into an election season and you can see and watch all of the acts. And what happens is you don't talk about 27 things, you talk about three. And you talk about what you're going to do with those three key issues. You know, as people we can no longer remember, no, probably ever. You know, we're going to do 27 different things. What are the most important things? And you distill those down. You keep the language simple and you use analogies and personal stories. And you also use the graphics and images. You provide evidence such as numbers. So that's where you get, you know, the statistics and your outcomes and the impact that you already have. And then you're consistent with your delivery and you highlight what is relevant to the issues that you want. We communicate those with images. So it's at this point in the process, once we have the feedback from the community- So it's at this point in the process, once we have the feedback from the community and we have the key messages that we bring in, the visual impact that we want to have. So at this point, we, Visual Impact will start developing what some of the images are that we will be forming with the key messages. The other thing that you talked about is really wanting to understand your current communications and training and what's going in there. To do that, we have formal communications audit. Peter has performed a number of those, including one very extensive one for New Milford Hospital as well as South Kent School. And what we do in the communications audit is a systematic method to identify the strengths and weaknesses of your communications. What do your audiences know? How are they getting their information? How are they understanding the information? What are they receiving? And we compare that against what you want them to know and want to receive. And we do the basic gap analyses and then we do the work analyses and we put those two things together. So we have a very clear picture of what you want to communicate and what you are communicating. And then we bridge that gap between the two to develop what ultimately becomes your communications plan. So the community assessment, what they want, with the key messages, what you offer, and the communications audit, the best phrase to say it, equals your communications plan. So the communications plan, what are you communicating, to whom, how frequently, by what means, and are you going to be outcomes you want? And we embed outcomes, expected outcomes into the package. And so you can have all kinds of different ways of communicating from whether you're sending out texts, or, you know, you work at Maple High School, or you're doing email marketing, or you're imaging or sending brochures. We'll put that all together in the communications plan. And the steps that we take is the next step is to work with you, set specific objectives of what you're looking for. Right now, some of the objectives are a little bit vague in terms of where you want to attract people. It's from how you want to do that to be so that we obey to us. So we want very specified objectives that we can work with. Develop the communications plan and then determine the requirements for implementation. It's very difficult at this point to say that you want 5,000 brochures to go to 5,000 people here. We have no idea how many. We have no idea what the means and what the methods are going to be. So the future follow-up step is to set the implementations, to implement the plan, and then measure the results. What we're presenting to you tonight takes you through steps one, the first one through three, and what we would do going forward with the next. So we, that's basically what we would do. And we now thank you and offer the opportunity for questions.
Thank you. Johnny, go. Valerie, go.
What have you done for Shapak so far? In your cover letter, there was mention made.
I can speak to that. Bill, again, we've just been doing some, all of the framed pieces that you see of student life going on are things that we've been producing. I think they've been installed at school, but we've been doing the, we've sold the frames and done the prints. The large banner in the foyer area with the school drawing on it that you'll see as you enter school. I've actually brought with me a retractable banner stand for Debbie. Is Debbie here? That I could also show you. That's what we've been doing up to this point for Shapak. Mostly decor-oriented, community spirit type of graphics.
Thank you.
Moving on. What?
What we're going to help us find our brand and our brand messaging.
I'm sorry, I was surprised.
What we're going to help us find our brand, identify our brand and our brand messaging.
What's going to help you identify your brand is, number one, understanding what your objectives are. So that's the first step. The second is understanding what the community normally thinks about, because that's a community assessment. And the third is developing the key messages from there. So that's the process that we go through that helps you ultimately create your brand.
Yes.
What is the, I'm seeing from your future follow-up, I know one of the things we were discussing, we had a brochure that needed a more professional aspect to it, because I heard you mention printing up 5,000 brochures and get to that. But in addition to hard collateral, what is your sense of our end goal in this relationship? In other words, some of the questions you're asking, we have reasonably vague but clear understanding of already. In other words, the whole communications assessment, the gap, you'll find it's, the gap will be easy to spot, it's rather large. So that's not going to be tricky. You're not going to have to wrestle with us as to what our failings are or our mis-targeting in our communication, because we at this point have very little structured communication beyond obviously our, in-school community, you know, parents and students and that. We're talking about obviously beyond that into the greater three towns and even into the region and the state. So as far as, once the assessment is done, are you, as part of this, intending to present us with solutions? Or are you intending to implement and take over, for instance, our, the handling of our public image for a temporary or permanent?
We're not looking to, quote-unquote, "take it over." But we are looking to give you the solutions that you need, the blueprint, the playbook of exactly how you need to do that. If you wish us to take it over, that would be a conversation for a future date. But when we look at the community assessment, we're not looking for, you know, how big the gap is or what you're not doing correctly. What we're really looking for is what are people looking for? You know, whenever you're talking about how you do marketing, you know, you've got supply and demand. So what is the demand that community is having? And how can you best go about supplying that? And then once you figure that out, and that's the basis of doing the assessment and then the key messaging, once we do that and we match those two things together, then we can begin to effectively communicate. We're not sure at this point in the game, if brochures are the best way. I think that, you know, the automatic thing is, well, you know, our communications isn't great, let's do a brochure. That never solves anything. What you really want to understand is what is the key thing for people to be, what is the key thing for you to be communicating, in what ways, so that people hear your message, resonate with them, and they make a choice? And that's that, you are think, feel, do. So we want people to think about you very cognitively, the positive things about you, the outcomes, the impact you had. We want them to feel that this is the right place for their kids, and we want them to act upon it. That's the whole purpose of what we're looking to do with this.
Go.
Me? Sure. So if I'm hearing you correctly, basically, it's an assembling information is a main thrust of what you intend to do over time. And other than, it looks like, what do you mean by collateral development?
Collateral development would be what brochures, what newsletters, what e-newsletters, what, what marketing materials do you need? So collateral is marketing materials. We're not just gathering information. We're gathering information to pull that information into a very cohesive plan that says, you need to do this, you need to do that, you need to do the other, you need to do the one thing.
Sure, if you might, if you mind. Also, you know, in the, the creative development, after the audit is complete, you might not, you can find that you need to do a newsletter. There may be a direct mail campaign might be needed. Maybe it's something that you could do online. It could be done through, you know, Constant Contact or some sort of other electronic distribution. So again, to Sharon's point, is the audit is important because we're really not sure what's going to be best to get the people into the school system that you're looking to get in here yet. So for us to come up with advice and avoid doesn't really make much sense.
And if I might just continue for just a moment, would, part of what you do, the one thing I didn't hear was press, the press relations. And we do have coverage of the school, of our meetings occasionally, and very well. But, but, you know, we're in the middle of nowhere and, you know, there's a limited pool of reporters that, and they usually, like tonight, we have a town meeting in the town in Washington. So, you know, everyone's kind of stretched thin. But I find that, I personally think, the occasional press release or conversation with our local press, who really are wonderful, and usually they're weekly papers, are, I think, essential.
Well, part of a communications, and the second, I'm turning it over to Peter. Part of a communications plan includes media relations, includes press releases, and includes, a communications plan includes every element that you are communicating, using to communicate your message. Including visitors from out of state.
Such quills count.
So I'm going to let Peter talk to media relations because he's done some very effective work with other groups like this.
I've worked a lot with New Milford Hospital, which had some really serious sort of negative media issues at one point, back when they wanted me to come in. At the time, they had had a board and management change. The director was replaced unexpectedly, dramatically. It had a negative effect on the community. So I dealt with that. South Kent School had a lot of issues, like one thing, people didn't even know it was there. It was like it was invisible. One thing I convinced them to do, I didn't even notice on Route 7 now, there's a sign that says, "South Kent School," Connecticut, sort of green sign. That was the first thing I made them do. I live in Sherman and people, I said, "Do you know South Kent School?" And they go, "Um, no." I said, "Well, it's right up the road and a lot of people go there from Sherman. And it's a really excellent school for some purposes. You know, you might like it, but it's up the road, you know." So that road sign was a big communications, really sophisticated communications device.
Real high-tech.
And I have to say, I love Shapak. My kids go here, I love it. I actually encourage them to go there. They would have preferred, because we were in Sherman, to go with most of their friends to New Milford or maybe even Fairfield. And I said, "You have an opportunity to go to a school that's like a private school right here, you know, with amazing facilities and a great reputation." And they had no interest in that at all, but they do, they did come here. And I have to say, my daughter's a senior, she has had a wonderful experience. If you can share just some of the experiences we're like, like people like my daughter, who came here and thrived and blossomed and loved it and made friends, it's just the size and the scope, and the facilities, and some of the marvelous teachers are real marvel. I mean, I hate to see the school doing the, you know, which I see happening, and it doesn't have to happen, I don't think. In one ways, press, we do have a solid press corps here in this area, and they are reachable. And the Cummings and other people love the Shapak and they love the sports and they love, you know, they get right, they're like your best booster that also can write for a wide audience. So, and it doesn't cost that much really to reach out to these. But all I'm saying is, we have a great opportunity here. But as you can see, and I think someone already said, we don't really have anything going on. So if you want things to kind of perk up, you got to do something.
And that's what we're proposing here tonight.
Mike?
First of all, I just want to apologize. That wasn't a comment on your presentation. I didn't set that off or anything. It wasn't like a book or anything like that. I just, I know when you were showing us your client list, most of your clients were private schools. And this is something that we're struggling with as a board because it's not typical for a public school to hire communication specialists like yourself. And so I'm wondering what, what technique or what idea, other than the sign, which might be a very valid idea, that, that has worked for you in a private school that you think might easily transfer here?
I think, I've worked with a couple of private schools. I was actually on the board of a private school over in Pauling, which is at foundation level, the Mizzintop School. And we had a lot of issues to deal with because we really were starting from scratch. And the school's done well, but some of the communications devices obviously are the other. These days, you have so many wonderful electronic ways to reach out to people. So we, of course, we immediately bypassed paper and pencil and, you know, graphics the old-fashioned way and went right to the more modern electronic, digital communications. And I was in the bottom of looking at your website. We had a lot of volunteers that helped us from parental community, because there are a lot of usually talented people that can help to help reduce the cost and also know the school. South Kent was interesting because of its unusual positioning. It's a school that may not be in the top tier academically, but it is in the top tier for athletics. Like a very huge difference between their athletic prowess and their educational prowess, you know, SAT scores or whatever. So what we want to do is bring those two together. So we did a campaign locally to do, you know, unpaid advertising, you know, media placements about all the wonderful academic achievements of the school. And we started to do, where do the kids go to school? Like where do they get, when the athletes would get offers, publicize that from great schools. When the kids won academic scholarships and awards and got into college, publicize those. I know that's done pretty commonly, but, you know...
And one of the things actually reminds me, the Harvey School found that printing out a magazine about the school once a year and sending it to the alumni and the alumni parents was very effective in helping to convince other parents and other kids to go to the school. So they actually use kind of an old-fashioned, as we said before, but still, I mean, print media is still something you need to consider. So they found that that was extremely effective because the kids talk to each other and then they have siblings and then they have friends and they have so forth. So they found that that was, you know, a very effective way of doing the communication.
As I was saying, the other thing we use, particularly at South Campus events, concerts, guests, artists would come in, kind of to elevate the impression of the school as a cultural hub. And also to show people where it was and have food that people might come, even if they didn't want to see the school, they might come and get something to eat, like at a harvest festival and have cider and donuts.
So I think, you know, you need to hire us for more of these ideas.
Well, I think that's kind of, kind of the bent here, is that it's more perhaps public relations management and image consulting and image heightening implementation that we're looking for, more than specific advertising to a specific, you know, sales to, you know, resident or non-resident student applications. It's more as enrollment. I think it's more in terms of, some of the things you were talking about in terms of increasing awareness and perception and re-establishing a reputation that was somewhat more loudly heard statewide in the past 10 years than it is now. And correcting also within the community, some of the, what I've noticed in my time in the board, some misunderstandings or misconceptions about the school that might help to have that kind of, you know, almost boosterism.
And I think it's important to note that there is no one magic bullet. And I think that's why when we develop a communications plan, we look at all of the opportunities, from Peter was saying, you know, from the events to what makes sense in terms of a print media, to what makes sense in terms of, you know, the PR, to what makes sense in terms of your e-communications. We also need to develop that within a reasonable budget. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, we specialize working with nonprofits. That's what we work with. And we also specialize in working with smaller nonprofits who don't have a lot of budget and need to make sure that they are effectively communicating what they need to communicate. So that's our area of expertise and we look at all of the different avenues. That's why we like the assessment. That's why we want to understand the key messaging. And that's why we end up doing the audit to see what's working and what's not working. And then come up with a plan that's going to work for you within your budget and achieve the objective you want to achieve.
Is, from what I could see from the proposal, that's the scope of your plan from October to June? Could we arrange for perhaps more implementation either concurrently or sooner?
I think some of that, I think we need to go through the process. You don't want to jump ahead with something like this. Because in all honesty, putting any kind of a communications plan is going to be, is going to require resources. It's going to require people resources and financial resources. So we really advise that you go through the process to figure out what the communications plan is. You know, once that, and we can certainly try to do it in a shorter framework. What we're saying is six months. So we're really looking, you know, to see if we can get it done more around March or so. I think at that point, what we do is we... I think at that point, what we do is we make recommendations to you that say, "We think this is a plan that you should do, understand what your budget is, you understand what this will cost," and then there's a conversation. And then the implementation of that would be the next phase.
All right, is there anything else, sir? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you coming.
Maybe we can leave it there, and then I'll ask Principal what she wants to do with it.
You want me to put it down?
Do you want it up or down, Kim? The banner. You'll take care of it? Okay.
Yes, we're waiting for the next discussion. Go ahead.
So what are our next steps? I mean, after we do the next presentation, executive session discussed, what would you want us to do? So it would be an executive, I'm sorry, April?
No, it wouldn't be done in the executive stage. I don't know if it would be.
It's contract, but that's okay, I don't mind. I just want, didn't know.
It is under item 8.3, if the board wants to take some action.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, this is, I'm sorry, this is Baldwin Marketing LLC.
Yeah, Baldwin.
Hi, Anne.
Hi. How are you?
Hi, Debbie. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks. She's been great, by the way.
All right, so just go.
Yes, you're on.
Do I have an IT helper? I hope.
Yep.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Yes, you do. We'd quite like you to.
We should pull up the tower. While he's doing that, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come to this beautiful town. I love it up here. And I just want a Volkswagen Bug convertible, so it's like perfect to drive. So I am assuming that you've all had a chance to read through the proposal that we have submitted. I didn't bring the rest of my team with me. I just figured that I would give you a brief synopsis of my experience, my background, and more importantly, my proven results in working with schools. My background, just to go over briefly, I used to be that girl on the news, for those of you old enough to remember. And I'll say it by nodding, you don't have to admit it. So that was my background. I worked at the NBC affiliate, but I've been gone for 20 years. And I started a public relations firm, and I, you know, I really wonder if I should have called it that, because it's really evolved into something where I worked a lot with educators, I worked a lot with nonprofits, I worked a lot with schools. And I'll get into that in a little bit. But I found that there are so many businesses, individuals, people that don't know how to deal with today's media, and in my personal opinion, it's getting harder and harder, especially with the emergence of social media blogs. You know, it's just totally unchecked these days, and we unfortunately have to live with that, but we can also use that to our advantage. And how I've really built my business is trying to strengthen, do you want me to stand somewhere else? I didn't know I was gonna be on TV tonight. Thought those days were over. So I really work hands-on. I mean, we're a small firm based out of Newington, Connecticut. We do work locally, regionally, and nationally, and especially with school systems. So I'll talk to you a little bit about, first of all, the experience, and we're gonna have a Q and A section afterwards. So in my office, there's myself. I would tell you right up front, I am the point person on a project like this. I'm the one that you're gonna deal with, I'm the one that's gonna come here, I'm the one, when there are media interviews, that is gonna be by your side, helping you with your messages, seeing you through every step of the process. I don't pass you along to anybody. Now, we do have folks in my office, under my guidance, that will help post things to your YouTube channel, if that's what you want us to do. Some of the media interviews and things, I noticed that you've got a great YouTube channel on your website, which, by the way, is great. The only thing I see missing is your strategic plan, but I'm sure that's in the works, and probably this is gonna be a component of that, I would hope. So they do the social media stuff, we manage Facebook pages for a lot of our clients, we look for content, or ask for content to help post those things. We work with like the Connecticut Convailing Society, we work with law firms. But again, my specialty has really become working with school systems in good times and in bad. I was working with Newtown when they were going from owner-operators to a bus company with Janet Robinson, the superintendent down there. That was a big deal. But from a public relations standpoint, we needed to communicate what was going on with that. We had community forums and things, and then fast forward, we all knew, know what happened shortly after that. And that's one of those things that I'm available 24/7. I don't care if it's in the middle of the night, I don't care if it's a Saturday morning, if something is happening and you need some help and assistance in dealing with communication, whether it's internal or external. And I'm not just talking about media here. Communication doesn't, it's not just about the media, it's about your constituents, it's about your parents, it's about your students. So every, for me, every step of the communication process is vital. And I really want to work with boards, and I want to work with whomever is part of that communication process, depending on the level. How do I advance it? Where do you go? I have no idea. Okay, so the bottom line is, the media does have an agenda, and we all know that, so how do we deal with that? And that's where, over the 20 years that I've been in business doing this, I've had very strong media relationships. Plus, even if I don't have a relationship necessarily with somebody specifically at News 12, I know how the media operates, I know how these reporters think. I do diligence to find out what their agenda is, who else are they talking to, what's the story that they're looking for? So that I can find all that out for you. We might have five minutes, we might have five days, chances are we have five minutes. But better to kind of insulate ourselves and take that five minutes to better be prepared to respond to whatever the issue is. So that's really kind of my premise, yes.
Anne, I'm sorry, before you continue, can you tell us, articulate what you believe that our problem is? What do you understand of the our issue to be, that you're gonna address for us?
Well, I believe that your issues are very similar to, and I'll get into some of that, but if you want me to answer that off the top, I can. Why, do you think I'm off target?
No, 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 no.
Why would I let it get to us? It's in your presentation somewhere, correct?
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
I always, I always correct people for interrupting, so I guess I interrupted.
No, it's okay. But I can tell you right now, I don't have a strategic plan just for you here, because I don't know enough about you yet. I need to know who I'm gonna work with, what your priorities are, because you can't do it all. You've got to bite off, in my opinion, you've got to bite off pieces of this, and then they start to take on a bigger life, if you will. So that's kind of how I get to this. So I think I'm annoying, going off on little candids, all that stuff. So here's some of my experience. I worked still with K, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. As a result of that relationship, have worked with schools all across the state, a number of superintendents, a number of boards, on both their internal communication and their external communication. What kind of tools are you using? What's your message? What is your target audience? I mean, a lot of these people face the same issues, to answer your question, that you do, and that's dwindling population. And you've got concerned citizens out there, you've got that vocal minority, if you will, that's always throwing things out there. So how do you kind of counter that and get your message out there unfiltered? Good step in the right direction, sits right here at this camera that's rolling, is with your public access, you know? So figuring out what other avenues you can do that. CAFHO, we're closely with them, CAPS, CATS. So as you can see, education is not foreign to me at all. So what is the process that we would go through in order to figure out, what are your particular needs? I mean, I could easily go back to a template of something I've done for another school district, and I could just fill in the blanks, but I don't operate that way. I need to know a little bit about you, and it doesn't take, we don't have to study it, we don't have to focus group it, but we do need to have conversations. And I need input from you, from your folks, to find out exactly what is it that you're up against? How do people want to get their information here? What's working? What's not working? So we look at what you're doing currently. You updated your website, that's a big nugget, that's a big piece. So an internal audit of communications, what are the key issues? And also making sure that you are all on the same page with key messages, if you will, so that what you're saying, you're saying, and you're saying, so there becomes some continuity. Because what I found, one of the biggest disadvantages that boards create for themselves is that disconnect. I mean, you might not all be on the same page politically, you might not all be on the same page as far as a lot of things go, but you need to be on the same page when you're communicating, because people could detect that dysfunction, if you will, and we don't want to let that happen. Key messages, communication opportunities. You know what? We don't wait for the people in the media to come to us. Let's figure out what stories you have here that are worth telling. I mean, in some of your stories, and I found with some of the schools I've worked with, what we think is a little local story that starts out in our small paper turns into national news. We had an underwater monopoly game in Plainville, and we just got a great picture and little caption, it made it onto the Associated Press, and Kathy Binkowski, who was the superintendent at the time, said people were calling her from like Beijing, former students, saying that they saw. So you just never know. These things can really be exciting, and that's the other thing, it creates an excitement. It creates an internal vibe that you're like, you feel like you're being heard, you feel like you're getting your message out there. To me, I think that's the benefit of it. Developing a strategy, you know, people don't just go into, "Well, let's just wing it, let's see what we got going on this month." What I like to do is put together like a blueprint. I mean, if you're gonna build a house, you know what you're gonna build, right? So what's happening in November that we can highlight? December, January, February? You know which things are coming up. What is it that we can kind of spin and make exciting, and what is it that we want to communicate? Now, in between those things, things are gonna pop up, things are gonna happen. So you want to be able to be fluid with that, but knowing kind of what your target events are. And the other thing is sometimes oversaturation. And people, one of the biggest things, what do you need a PR firm for? What do you need a communications firm for? You know, we can't afford this, we can't afford that, why are you spending money on this? Because in the end, it helps you not make money, but helps you make sense, and it helps you be a better community member to your constituents. I fully believe that. And I've got references on my sheet there, and I can provide you more if you'd like, that will testify to that. And then implementation of a strategy. And who am I going to be a direct connect with? Who's gonna be my internal source that I can make sure that things are, you know, getting to me, that I'm getting things to them? How are things gonna be approved and signed off on? Because the communication process too has to happen, like I said, in a lot of cases, fairly quickly. There isn't a lot of time for a decision by committee, if you will. This is an example, for East Granby Public Schools. I wanted to give you just a brief case study. So this is where they were having some internal conflict on their board, they were having some trouble, and I don't expect you to be able to read this, but this is where, you know, we had a couple of meetings with the board members, and we really came up with these key messages. So there's about six key messages, not 20, not 30, but everybody agreed to these, and this kind of was our template for what we were gonna speak to and what we were gonna get out there. We also created our own show with board members and the superintendent at Granby Public Access Television Station, in which I actually interviewed these folks, and we did great half-hour programs way before the budget about some of the programs, and some of the students, and some of the things that we wanted to showcase, and those were available on public access, those were available at the library, those were on their YouTube, those were on their website, so that people had access to that. I mean, as you can see, there's not a lot of people that sit in the seats at your board meetings, and I know that you televise your board meetings, but make it a little more interesting, perhaps. Make it a little bit more engaging, and there are ways that you can do that. And I can help you with that, as someone who worked in television. So that was a great tool for us. And also, and again, this was for East Granby, having the superintendent sit next to some of her board members in the board chair spoke volumes. Did they necessarily hang out together all the time? No. But there they were, they were cohesive, they were part of this team, they were communicating together, and that just went over like, I can't even tell you. So what happened here was, as a result of all the hard work that we did, and all the media that we got, for the first time ever, the East Granby budget passed. So, I mean, can I take full credit for that? No. But what was different this year than any other year? The fact was, the fact that we got information out, and we communicated with the folks in East Granby. So it was a touchdown, it really, really was. So this is the current headline that spoke to that. I want to show you a little bit about what I talk about, I know you want good news out there, but let's all be, let's all face the fact that it's not always good stuff that happens. And I believe that you truly have to manage that just as effectively as you do the good stuff. So where was I when Plymouth was involved in hiring the superintendent? And I've, I signed confidentiality agreements, but I've had permission to discuss these case studies. These were the headlines from all these different stations. Former Hebert Superintendent, Plymouth School Superintendent Out, all these news outlets. And where was I? I was at the board meetings, I was putting out media advisories, I was working with the board chair and his attorneys to make sure that we knew what we were gonna say, how we were gonna handle these situations, and I was by his side every step of the way. So this was really just amazing. And I believe that I have a really good reputation. I know that I have a really good reputation with the news media, because I'm not a brick wall in the communication process. You know, you do what you need to do for me, media people, and I'll help you do what you need to do. But don't cross that. And this is a good example of that, because I would say, okay, the school board chair is gonna make a brief statement, no questions. Everybody knew where, when, except for one reporter from Channel 8. She was sitting there practicing her five-second stand-up for an hour and missed it. So then she tries to chase my guy down the hallway, making it look like he's running away. Oh, no, no, that, that didn't happen. So, you know, if I have to get my claws out, and I've got to stop these people to protect you, that's exactly what I'm gonna do. I'm on your side, that's the bottom line.
We rarely make Channel 8.
We don't like to make Channel 8.
Right. So, and then this is just an example of, the other thing is, when I work for a school district on retainer, I am your agency of record. So let's say hypothetically, a media inquiry comes in, we have a public relations person, give her a call, I filter through that, I find out who it is, what their agenda is, like I said, I do the homework for you, and then I say, "Okay, here's an opportunity," or "Here's something they're asking for, perhaps we should take part in this, perhaps we shouldn't." So the correspondence comes from me, which takes those things off your plate, so that maybe they do a story and say, "Well, we called so-and-so, and our calls were never returned." Well, maybe it was a weekend, but I'm available 24/7, like I said, so those things don't happen. And I also do ask for accessibility, at least to someone, should I need to reach them. So the end result is, this was the final headline, that they accepted the resignation. You know, it was one of those things, there was so much miscommunication, because everybody thought they should just fire her, but you can't. She didn't do anything wrong in that particular school district. So people don't know the legal, and, you know, the money that the board was spending on forensic investigations and attorney's fees, I mean, at what point do you, you know, but we had to communicate some of that. So I wanted to make sure that we illustrated that. I do want to show you, going back to East Granby, there are different, you know, positive stories that I pitch to various media outlets. Where'd my guy go? I don't know how to get to my, I need to see here. I want to just get to, there's a segment on here that I want to show you. So bear with me. Because this is, this is when I'm talking about good news, this is a perfect example of how it ends up, and I'll talk about how I manage this. Okay, I figured out by myself. Control.
One more time, we're almost there.
Hold it.
Control and click at the same time. Your little, your cursor should be just a little higher up.
Here?
Right on it, there you go. Maybe right in the middle, a little bit more to the right. That's it, right there, right there, click right there.
There. Okay. Is that it? Okay, now how do I get it full screen? Oh, I hate to know. Oh, here we go. I don't know how to get it full screen. And do we have audio with this?
They don't, to the sweet of it.
We have to watch the commercial.
We can develop passion, and then they just go off. Tim Testament has been at East Granby High for so many years, he's taught the parents of some current students, but what he's teaching has changed drastically.
I would get woodwork in classes, I think they're very important. But the stuff they're getting down now with SunTrust Community College and the 3D printing system.